I now call the January 5, 2016, regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Thank you. Do we have a volunteer to lead us in the pledge tonight? Some brave soul. Come on. Come on up. Be brave. Just come on up to the podium. Give us your name, please, and we'll give you a little applause for doing this.
I'm Natalie Barry.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the December 8, 2015, special council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on December 13, 2015. So moved. Seconded by Councilman Mundell, seconded by, I think, Councilman Miller, Councilman Hopkins. Any corrections to the minutes? Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the December 15, 2015, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on December 23, 2015. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Mundell, seconded by Councilman Miller. I see Councilman Mundell is going to take every opportunity this evening to...
Are we voting?
Which is a good thing. Please record the vote, please. Okay. Are we having problems with their buttons again? Okay, there we go.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the January 5, 2015, bills and claims as audited by City Manager McDonald. So moved. Seconded. Moved by Councilman Mundell, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
We now have a presentation to make because this is Councilman Mundell's final meeting and she has performed excellent service to the city over the past year. We will miss her greatly. And if you'll stand, Councilman Mundell, I have a plaque to give you, an appreciation of your service. It says, "Presented to Robin Mundell on behalf of the citizens of the city of Casper, Wyoming, for your sincere dedication and service during your tenure as council member, January 2015 to January 2016."
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Mundell, do you have any outgoing comments?
You would never, never expect that I wouldn't. I do have a few things that I'd like to say, and it looks like I have a lot, but I'll try to do it quickly. I have notes and I need to read them because otherwise I go down bunny trails. So first of all, I'd like to thank the voters of Ward 1 for your vote of confidence in my ability to be your councilman. I came into office with every intention of fulfilling my term and obligations. As I've stated in the past, life has dealt Rodney and I major change and direction. Why are we leaving? Simply put, Rodney, who has supported me in all of my endeavors, has had some major health challenges. Surgery in May was really a zinger, and his life has been consumed with pain management, therapy, and doctor's appointments. About the time we think we are ahead, we get a setback. It was our daughter's suggestion. Had we thought about moving to a lower elevation and to a warmer climate for his health? At first, the answer was no. I had council obligations. But as we explored further the possibility, it was obvious that the best thing to ensure equality of life for Rodney, one free of connection to an oxygen concentrator 24/7, and dealing with pain and the side effects of medication, that a move would be the best decision. Life is too short to not do what is right. We chose Nevada for several reasons. First, our son lives there. Second, the lower altitude means Rodney does not need to be connected to the oxygen concentrator and is free to move about without a hose connected to anything. And three, and I'm going to be perfectly honest about this, because Nevada has legalized medical marijuana, that could be a potential pain treatment modality for Rodney. So we made the decision. I share these things because those of you who know us know the struggles that we have faced, and in our shoes, you too would have made the same decision. I truly appreciate the opportunity and the privilege to serve the city of Casper. I've enjoyed working with this council, and I believe that we have made great strides. When I look over the past year, I know that it flew by awfully quick. I took my responsibility seriously and attended a lot of meetings. My sister jokingly said I attend way too many meetings for a retired person. But the reality of serving in this position is one that must, is one who must be willing to spend about 20 hours a week in meetings and preparation. I'm not sure how those who work full-time jobs or run their own business are able to balance the work, and I truly admire you. I am proud that I was able to play a role to allow our citizens to have a choice to raise bees and chickens. Healthy food choices mean a healthier, healthier community. There are several other big things that are in different stages of planning, and I am proud to have had a small role in some of the changes that Casper will see in the near future in its downtown. A vibrant downtown is a vibrant community. I'm also proud and happy to be able to leave this community in the capable hands of V.H. McDonald and Bill Lubin, and the amazing employees of the city of Casper who, every day, make sure that our garbage is picked up, our water flows through the pipes, the streets are clean, the lights are on, traffic is controlled, and our community is planned. I can tell you, because I worked with V.H. and Bill for 12 years, that these are two gentlemen who are excellent leaders, and Casper is lucky that they rode through the difficult last four years. There will be no more backdoor negotiations, no secret meetings, and their word is their honor. They have character and ethics and speak the truth. I had some dreams of being a mayor, especially when the eclipse was here, because it's my 69th birthday, and I thought we could have one heck of a birthday party. So Vice Mayor-elect Kathy, I expect to see you win reelection so that you can preside over the affair because I want to have a birthday party. And I will be here. In closing, Casper is my home. There's a great deal of comfort driving into town and seeing Casper Mountain presiding over this great community. I've had the honor of establishing many wonderful relationships throughout the years. I will miss seeing my friends on a regular basis, not able to do a quick trip to the store because I run into a friend. I will miss Casper but not be a stranger. I will be watching you all and pray the best for our future. Thank you again to the city and for this opportunity to serve.
And at the risk of repeating myself, when you first announced, I think it's important to note that this, these positions do require considerable time and effort, and you have been exemplary in carrying out those duties over the past year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments from council members?
As stated in the rules of the council, the mayor is elected by the city council from their members. Interested members submit their names as candidates for mayor and vice mayor near the end of the calendar year. An informal and non-binding straw poll was taken by secret ballot at the December 22 work session. The votes are turned over to the city attorney and the current mayor to count and announce the results. Traditionally, the prior year's vice president is elected as the new mayor, but this is not required by any ordinance or other legal instrument. After the vote for mayor, a second straw poll is taken to elect the vice president. At the first official council meeting of the new year, the council formally votes on the new mayor and vice president. Traditionally, the council members selected are those who were selected by the straw poll. So at this time, council will select the mayor for the calendar year 2016, and the chair would entertain a motion to elect the mayor.
So moved. Here. Very well. You need to make a more specific motion.
Oh, sorry. I move to elect Councilman Sandoval as mayor of the city of Casper for calendar year 2016.
Seconded. Seconded. Councilman Johnson moves to elect Councilman Sandoval as mayor of the city of Casper for calendar year 2016, and it is seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Congratulations. The next order of business will be the council to elect the vice president for calendar year 2016. The chair would entertain a motion to elect the vice president.
Mayor, I move to elect as councilman Steve Kathy as our vice president for this Casper City Council for calendar year 2016.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Mundell moves to elect Councilman Kathy as vice president of the Casper City Council for the calendar year 2016, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandoval. Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
And I think you're up. At this time, I would like to present Mayor Powell with a plaque honoring his service as mayor. Plaque.
That's January 1.
Yes, your mayoral. And... You have your... Okay. Charlie Powell, City of Casper, Mayor, 2015. Presented with sincere appreciation for outstanding leadership, efforts, and concern on behalf of the citizens of this community. Council members Daniel Sandoval, Scott Miller, Steve Kathy, Robin Mundell, Bob Hopkins, Ray Pacheco, Sean Johnson, and Kenan Schlogger.
Let us not forget the Wyosity flag. There you go. Thank you. Get photos of it. My outgoing speech will be quite a bit shorter than my incoming a year ago. It has been a pleasure to work with this group and to work for the city of Casper. As has been noted many times, one cannot be in a position like this without developing a very deep appreciation for the quality of the staff who serve the citizens of this community. And as our former city manager was often said, working in these positions is not a job, it's a calling. And we have people who serve our citizens every day and serve them with quality that is very impressive, and it's just been an honor to work with all of you. When I came in, my goal really was to have fewer headlines about us and more headlines about the city and what's going on in the city of Casper. My other goal, which I guess I never really clearly stated, was I wanted to be the most boring mayor this city has seen in many, many years. And I like to think that I achieved that. Boring, given what we've been through over the past three or four years, I think was a good thing. And I apologize to the media for having to cover a boring mayor, but I have good news for you. I think your fortunes are about to change. So with that, Judge Nakbar will now issue the oaths of office to the newly-elected mayor and vice president. It's very nice. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Daniel Sandoval.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming...
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming...
And that I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment...
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment...
Or caused it to be done by others...
Or caused it to be done by others...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Vice President Kathy, would you care to make any comments this evening?
I will defer the big policy statements to the new incoming mayor, but by the same token, I would like to thank a young lady that's sitting in our audience for putting up with me and the time away from home to be able to do the work of the city. I thank you, Vicki.
And Mayor Sandoval, would you care to make any comments this evening?
Thank you. This is not a big regime change because essentially we have a very competent council. We all have talents that we bring, and so I do not expect any significant changes. The only real change is we're looking at a different horizon as far as finances and revenue, and in May 8 of 2015, the Casper Star Tribune admonished this council to get its priorities straight, and it was making reference to us tucking away $9 million in what Councilman Hopkins referred to as an opportunity fund. And the fact that we're tucking money away seemed at the time like maybe we were a little I would take issue with that characterization. I think that it was, as Hopkins has titled it, an opportunity fund, and we are going to have an opportunity in this council, this very evening, to take advantage of an opportunity. Our priorities have been listed. Downtown development is not necessarily in that order, but it is first on that list of priorities, and so we will fulfill a very important purpose this evening because an opportunity has come up that we will probably never have again. So fortune favors the brave. I'm not going to attempt to say that in Latin, although there's a very familiar Latin phrase that goes with that. And I encourage us all to not get too nervous. We need to level out the bumps of our financial difficulties by a little bit of vision. And this council is very good, striking a balance between thrift and investment. And so we forge ahead with vision and with responsible accounting. Thank you.
Council will now take a brief recess while the voting screen is adjusted, and then council members, when we, when we return, will be seated in our new locations. This is your test. Page 11. Please. After the seating chart. Council will now address some of the main business portion of our meeting. Council carries out its business by three types of action, by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify law, whereas resolutions and minute actions provide for council to carry out business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not on consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council. There is a process for the public as well as council to remove a title from consent. Council will now consider established the schedule of future public hearings, which are held for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passing of the budget, zone changes. Public hearings also require public notice via publication in the newspaper. We would now like to establish a date of public hearings. Please read the consent agenda titles.
Established January 19, 2016, as the public hearing date for consideration of the vacation and replat of Lot 1, Hembree Edition, creating Hembree Edition Number 2 and rezoning same from AG Urban Agriculture to R2 One-Unit Residential located at 2671 South Robertson Road. Established January 19, 2016, as the public hearing date for consideration of the transfer of ownership of Restaurant Liquor License Number 4 doing business as Botticelli Restaurante Italiano located at 129 West Second Street. Establishment January 19, 2016, as the public hearing date for consideration of the transfer of corporate ownership of Retail Liquor License Number 6 doing business as Frosty's Lounge located at 520 South Center Street.
The chair would now entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just ran.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vice, Mayor Kathy, and seconded by Vice Mayor Mundell. I mean, Council, Councilman Mundell. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now hold previously scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of budget and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits for the issue, and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be allowed to speak in favor or against the issue, and then the council will discuss the issue and act upon if necessary. Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, cancel at the request of staff, the public hearing concerning the real estate trade agreement to trade real property owned by the city of Casper for real property owned by Michael C. Reed. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the transfer of ownership and location of Retail Liquor License Number 5, Elixir LLC. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have three exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one, that being correspondence from Tracy L. Belser to V.H. McDonald dated December 15, 2015. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune, that document being dated December 23, 2015. And exhibit number three, this being the affidavit of website publication as published on the city of Casper website dated December 3, 2015.
Thank you. City manager, report?
Your Honor, this is an application by the current owners of Retail Liquor License Number 5, which is Elixir LLC, and that, that license is located at 800 Antler Drive, and it's a transfer of ownership and location to the Lucky 95 LLC, and that will be located at 134th North Center Street. The license, this, this particular transfer will result in a license being parked, and so the two-year parking limitation applies to that until it has to be addressed again. All the proper publishing has been done and city reviews, so the recommendation is to make this transfer.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition, no, in favor of the transfer of Liquor License Number 5, please approach the lectern. Anyone in speaking in favor? Welcome, Mr. Nicolason.
Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be before you and council, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Peter Nicolason, 140 North Center is my business address, and as Mr. McDonald indicated, this license is intended to be parked at my office building for an interim period. Lucky 95 LLC is an entity owned by Travis Taylor. He's with me tonight, but we, at this time, don't have any imminent business plans for the license, but in any event, I'm here to answer any questions that I can, if there are any.
Very well. Council, any questions for Mr. Nicolason? Councilman Schlogger.
Thanks. Is this the first time we've parked this license?
No, it's not, Councilmember. It was parked for the two-year period at 800 Antler Drive. This is the license that was in the 303 South Walcott Building, and there was compliance with the statutory and ordinance provisions through that period, and then it was, was transferred.
Thank you. Any more questions from council?
Just one question for staff. How, how long can we park a license? Mr. City Attorney?
It can be parked for up to two years, subject, then, of course, to council's reapproval to park it a second time. It's in your discretion.
But that's... There's, there's a limit to that?
Actually, no, there's not.
Okay.
It's, but it's two-year intervals, so it has to come back to council for its consideration.
Thank you.
Councilman Mundell.
How long has this been parked already? Two years?
I believe.
That's correct.
We're at two years, so you're asking for another extension?
It's a different entity, different ownership, different location, different plans.
Thank you, Mr. Nicolason.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Before you step down, I'd like to ask a question of city attorney. Is, is there an issue or an attitude regarding parking of liquor licenses? Is it discouraged, encouraged?
I, I just have to tell council, over the many years I've been here, many licenses have been parked, some for more than the two-year period, just because there's no immediate plans to, to develop it and just to avoid losing it. So there's never, in my history, I don't think we've ever turned down the reissuance of, or parking of a license.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this issue, this new transfer of liquor license number five? Anyone else in favor? Well, do we have anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the transfer of liquor license number five? You may now please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak in opposition?
Name's Dennis Stensland, 533 South Washington, Casper. Total new subject to me tonight, but if you park a liquor license for two years, you d- Total new subject to me tonight, but if you park a liquor license for two years, you generate no income for the city, and yet you've got your license, and isn't that the idea of the licensing to sell some liquor, generate some taxes, help out the economy? That's my question.
Would anyone like to address that question? Okay, I'll take it. As we know, liquor licenses are substantial investments, and if someone makes that investment and is going through an adjustment period or changing the scheme of corporate interests or whatever they're doing, I think that they're entitled to do that, and, as has been stated, we do not have a history of rejecting these two-year terms of approval, and so I think if somebody wants to sit on that investment, I think they're entitled to.
Well, we're a new council, and we're in a new economic situation, so I would think it needs to be addressed. Four years, sitting on a license seems a little out of bounds, I guess, just a comment. Thanks much.
Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the transfer of Retail Liquor License Number Five? Please approach the lectern. There being no one else to speak for or against the transfer of Retail Liquor License Number Five, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to by minute action authorize the transfer of Retail Liquor License Number Five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Councilman Schlagel.
I appreciate what people are trying to do when they're parking a license. Maybe they're getting a plan together for what the future might hold, but in the past, it seems like I've seen, not necessarily this liquor license, but maybe another one parked three times. I just hope people are making their plans to invest into our community, for the betterment of our community, and not just sitting on licenses so that they have their investment or retirement for the future. I'd like to see us progress and not sit on licenses, so I'm crossing my fingers that we're moving forward with some kind of exciting developments in the near future.
Councilman Powell.
I'll vote for this, of course, because it is standard practice for us to do so, but I think when we have a system where a person purchases a liquor license for fifteen hundred dollars and it immediately is worth a quarter of a million dollars just because of the supply and demand, it just points out the problems associated with not allowing the free enterprise system to drive this, and I think the state's system really needs to be looked at, and that we, I would like to see the city get out of this business, and we can't do that without legislation, but this is just, this minor, relatively minor matter, sort of brings that to the fore again, that the reason that Mr. Steensland's remarks have some validity is that these are limited in number for our community by population, and that that is done by the state, and to me, it's really micromanaging something that the free market system should be handling.
Councilman Pacheco.
Yeah, I just took a quick follow-up. I'm not going to talk too long, but I agree with Councilman Schlagel in the sense that, you know, that we're not sitting on them or not doing it repeatedly. I think that that's not good, obviously, for business in the community, and that people heed that as well. And I do, I want to acknowledge, Mr. Steensland did have a good point in that, and I think that it is, and I always appreciate Mr. Steensland comes up here and asks those questions and gives us that opportunity to think a little bit about that, and I think in this question especially, what does that mean? And so hopefully businesses that do have liquor licenses are being responsible with that, and I'm not directly saying that about this one specifically, but I think making sure that we're making those wise choices for the economy here in Casper.
Councilman Cathy. Vice Mayor Cathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to reiterate Councilman Powell's comments about the status of liquor licenses within the state and the way they are regulated from that standpoint. That does impede business development, and it has impeded in the past new businesses coming. The other comment, to play the devil's advocate on the other side, is that I wish I had the wherewithal to be able to sit on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment, or what could potentially bring me two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and not have to worry about selling it. I wish I were that fortunate to be in that financial position, so from a free enterprise standpoint, I can appreciate the owner of the liquor license potentially doing well, so a bit of a congratulations to him as far as the free enterprise system is concerned too. So there's the pros and the cons of it, but I do have to agree that the system needs to be changed at the state level to allow more free enterprise throughout from that standpoint.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, just rhetorically, I would like to note that the return on the investments, it's their revenue not to be making, so, you know, we can bemoan a hypothetical loss in commerce, but ultimately, the first word in free enterprise is free, so I agree in spirits, but I think that it is okay to sit on a disinvestment. Any other discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
Councilman Mundell voting aye. Motion passes.
Okay, this is a third reading of an ordinance, a zone change of, change of two-twenty-four North Lincoln. Please read the consent ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change of Lot Fifteen, Block Ninety-Six, Casper Edition subdivision in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion on third reading to consent ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Mundell, seconded by Vice Mayor Cathy. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the purchase of real property from Plains Furniture Company. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution authorizing a real estate purchase agreement and other necessary documents for the purchase of real property from Plains Furniture Company of Casper, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Mundell. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, as you mentioned earlier, the City Council adopted the goal of fostering growth and prosperity in the city's downtown core through infrastructure development, creating public spaces and supporting facilities, with supporting facilities including parking lots or facilities. To support that goal, an opportunity has arisen to purchase property located between Ashen Davis Street and north of Midwest Avenue. It's on the map, in the area highlighted in green, which is pretty visible. This property, upon this property is principally the Plains Furniture Store and then some other buildings to the west, on the west side of the block, and it's roughly the entire south end of the block from the old fire station southward. The property is strategically positioned to accomplish objectives to meet the City Council's goal. The two thousand twelve Downtown Strategic Plan identified five potential locations for additional parking facilities to support the development of downtown. Specifically, this property may provide parking to support the public plaza, which is located on the north end of the block, and the civic auditorium located in the former Iris Movie Theater on West Yellowstone, just adjacent to the public plaza. Additional parking in the area will also support the overall development of downtown and the Old Yellowstone District. The proposed purchase price is three million, one thousand dollars. Funding for the purchase is proposed via from the city's Opportunity Fund and the revolving land fund. Both these funds, and in particular the Opportunity Fund, are intended for one-time purchases versus funding ongoing expenses. This is an important distinction in that these sources of funding are clearly intended for one-time capital acquisitions.
Discussion.
I'll start.
Councilman Powell.
If I may, thank you. In two thousand ten, the voters were asked to approve One Cent fourteen, and that vote passed on a seventy-to-thirty, seventy percent affirmative. And prior to that, surveys were collected, and citizens, as they have done in the past, very clearly stated that the primary purpose of One Cent funding is public safety, water and sewer development, and roads. True to that survey, this council has allocated approximately seventy percent of the One Cent funds to those very purposes, and we made good on the promise that was made to the public prior to that vote. We had four very good years, and at the end of that, after having done this and completed our agreements and our infrastructure improvements, as most of you know, we had twenty-four million dollars of additional funds that were not allocated through the budgetary process, and the council elected to spend nineteen, or fifteen million dollars of that sum on various infrastructure projects that, as Mr. McDonald states, were one-time projects. Councilman Hopkins gave us the term Opportunity Fund. I don't know that that was the correct name for it, because we were really thinking about it primarily as an insurance fund in the event that we faced major upgrades needed for our wastewater treatment plant, which was the primary purpose for setting aside that money. We have since seen information come in that tells us very clearly that the likelihood of those major improvements being required anytime in the foreseeable future is very low, and that this nine million dollars, while it needs to be maintained and not squandered, is not needed in the immediate future. And so this opportunity, and we have no control over when an opportunity of this sort comes up, this opportunity happens to come to us after a period of time where we've seen various very serious declines in our revenue, and so it's certainly understandable that people would question why we would want to spend money on additional land purchase at a time when our revenues are declining. I take the position that while there is risk when money is spent, that that money may be needed later for other reasons. There is also risk associated with missing opportunities like this, because if we've seen anything in recent years, our efforts to diversify have had some success, but we remain an economy that is primarily and almost exclusively dependent on energy, and as those energy prices go down, our revenues go down. We need to continue our work toward diversification, and what that involves in many ways is a transformation of the community to a place that people find attractive for various reasons, both from a business standpoint and from a personal satisfaction and quality of life standpoint. This purchase will help us to develop that downtown core, an area of land adjacent to the proposed plaza that we will have for parking purposes or perhaps some other purpose down the road. The opportunity will not come again, and if we don't seize it now, it will be gone, and we will have missed that opportunity to take one more step forward toward this diversification. So while I understand the worries about our finances and the seeming disconnect between spending money at a time when our revenue's in decline, this was the purpose, the other purpose for the Opportunity Fund, and I think we are very fortunate to have it come before us. Sorry for the lengthy speech, but I will, of course, be voting yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Powell said it greatly. I think we put together a fund to have some funds available to do some things that we may not be able to do otherwise. When we look at a piece of property like this, pushing three acres, that becomes available downtown, and we take into account that the goals that this group put together earlier in the year included, one, downtown infrastructure, three, recreation, this piece of property wins points on all three. We're getting it for a reasonable price, it will help the downtown area, and the O.Y.D. especially. This will literally, as I've stated before, something down here going on will move the centroid of downtown a little bit to the west. That doesn't take away anything from the downtown we got, but in fact, it's going to make it a better place to be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schlagel.
You know I just like to tease you, right?
Yes.
I think that this was probably a little bit of a bumpy road for Mr. Kelch, maybe not the smoothest and easiest process, but I want to thank you for your investment in Casper and for having the vision to help us with the progress that we want to make and the changes that we want to make. I don't think it was an easy decision for you. I think you're going through a lot of change at this time in your life, but it shows the strength and character that you have to proceed ahead, so thank you for giving some of us youngsters the chance to have progress and something new in our community, so thanks for hanging in there with us.
Councilman Johnson.
I'm going to be on the dissenting side here, though I do think this could potentially be a good thing for us in the future. I think it came at the wrong time, when our revenues are down, and there's really no end inside to the oil, prices dropping, which is our bread and butter here. Councilman Hopkins said that we attained this at a good price. I disagree. It was, we paid over appraisal price for it, so I am going to be voting no on this today.
Councilman Pacheco.
If you know me, I support the downtown a lot, and I talk a lot about it and wanting to be able to do it. I guess where the heartburn for me is, is we're buying in an economic downturn, and granted, we do have the money, so I'm not worried about our financial situation. I think we're set in a lot of ways. What concerns me in a lot of time is the hard-working city employee that sees this, and we're spending it, and they're not seeing a pay raise, or they're not seeing, they're seeing a hiring freeze. And so for us, I feel like this is, has a social justice issue behind it, and I think it has an issue behind it of looking at, are we looking at a fiscal responsible path for this? And although I agree that it's probably going to benefit the city in the long run, and it's going to be an investment that'll be for years to come, I agree with Councilman Johnson. I think it came at the wrong time, and I foresee some community members being very upset and coming and voicing that, and that should be in this time right now, and that has me concerned, and I support the downtown, I love the downtown, and I think it's the future of Casper, but I don't think this is the right time to do it, and so I will be voting no on it.
Councilman Mundell.
I-
I am going to vote for this. I have watched the old Y D, when it was the old west central corridor, 157 acres of crap. And it is slowly and with a lot of foresight and investment by people who have seen and have grasped at a potential, uh, have made, are making it what it is becoming, and it is a truly a great part. And this particular property is that nice bridge in between our downtown and the O Y D, and instead of downtown just being downtown, and then O Y D, O Y D, we have a downtown. And I just see some awesome things with this, and I realize the timing sucks, but I know and understand timing sucking. It doesn't always happen the way that we want it to happen. And, um, I just think that this is a true opportunity that will come around once in a lifetime. I just hope that we don't lose the old fire station, because I have a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in that building. But aside from that, anyway, I see this as being a positive move.
Councilman Miller.
I just wanted to put my two cents in and echo, um, in the side that, uh, I'm for this resolution. I know it's kind of a, a tricky, uh, purchase at a tricky time, by echoing the words of Mayor Sandoval just a few moments ago. You know, this is one of the things, uh, we sit here to do to help us adhere to our goals with some of the money that's, that's sitting there for us to do this exact thing. I really feel like this is going to be a catalyst that's going to tie things together with O Y D and downtown, more so than many of the other projects that we're doing. And this is such a huge opportunity, and I think it's the right move for us to, um, approve the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And basically, as has been stated here, this is capital money which is separate from operations money. So as far as the day-to-day operating of the city, none of the monies that will be spent on this project would be used to pay salaries, to pay for street repairs, I'm sorry, they could be used for street repairs, that would be capital money, but they wouldn't be used for salaries, they wouldn't be used for day-to-day operating expenses. Is that, or did I misspeak on the street repairs? I was correct on that, okay. I wasn't sure if I saw chagrin there or not. But basically, that is a bit of a distinction that we have here, is that we are not taking from the day-to-day operating money. I agree as well that in the long run, this probably would be a good opportunity. However, as has been stated, there are good times for opportunities, there are bad times for opportunities. This is one of those that sits on the fence. However, as is said in certain other situations, the devil can be in the details, and as Mr. Johnson brought up, one of the details that gives me significant heartburn is the price of the deal. And, um, I don't know as I can go along with that, and that's, I will probably be voting no for this because of that. I think we need to be good businessmen as well as taking advantage of opportunities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Well, before I call for the amendments or votes, I'd just like to note that, uh, opportunities come when they come. You got to seize them, you got to have a little courage. I think, I think in Latin, fortune favors the brave, the brave is fortis fortuna vivat. And, um, as has been pointed out by Councilman Hopkins, big chunks of property are harder and harder to come by, and this is a big chunk of property, and it gives us options. The state is looking at Casper to invest in a $40 million state building. This would give us another thing in our portfolio to invite that investment. If we're not going to invest in our downtown, why would the state? It gives us options, whether we use this property for parking, whether or not it becomes incorporated into the Eclipse Festival, whatever this property can do is on the table if we own this property. And, you know, real estate prices, they're, uh, they're capricious, but I know that if I was in California, this would be $30 million instead of three. So, everything is relative, and this is, this is a chance that I really feel very strongly that we need to seize. And I appreciate the fact that a local investor is giving the city this opportunity, because, as was stated, big chunks of property downtown, that just doesn't happen very often. So, I encourage this council to, uh, weather the storm of criticism, because yes, you're right. And, and they do have legitimate concerns of spending money in a downturn, but this, this is an opportunity we should not miss. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, may I make one more remark?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, there is clearly a discrepancy between the appraised value and the purchased value, but I believe that appraisal was three years old, is that correct?
The most recent one, Mayor, was 2.765.
And that was given to us when?
Two weeks ago.
Ah, okay, so there is that discrepancy then, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
Anyone else? Okay. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilmen Kathy Johnson and Pacheco voting aye, motion passes.
Consent resolutions. Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 16B1, a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the Wyoming Highway Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. Item 16B2, a resolution approving the vacation and replat of Mesa del Sol lots 3B and 4A to create Mesa del Sol Edition lots 3C and 4B. Item 16B3, a resolution approving the vacation and replat of lots 1 through 12 Mesa Edition Number 8 as Mesa Edition Number 10. Item 16B4, a resolution accepting a grant from the Wyoming Business Council Community Enhancement Grant Program. Item 16B5, a resolution accepting an easement from Casper Redevelopment Company LLC for installation of electrical equipment on private property. Item 16B6, a resolution authorizing an agreement, I'm sorry, an easement from City of Casper to Rocky Mountain Power for installation of electrical equipment on city-owned property. Item 16B7, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with W W C Engineering for construction administration services for Phase 2 of 15th Street and Elm Street improvements. Item 16B8, a resolution authorizing change order number 2 with Grizzly Excavating and Construction LLC for First Street Improvements Project. Item 16B9, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with Civil Engineering Professionals, Inc. for design and construction administration services for the East 21st Street Improvements Project. Item 16B10, a resolution authorizing change order number 1 with 71 construction for a price increase and time extension for the St. Mary's Storm Sewer 102-inch outfall repair in Riverview Park. Item 16B11, a resolution authorizing a work agreement with Rocky Mountain Power for conversion of overhead power to underground as part of the West Yellowstone and Walnut Street Reconstruction Project. Item 16B12, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with Recycled Materials LLC for professional services for hazardous materials study and demolition of the old Hogdon Lodge Ski Patrol Building and Maintenance Building. Item 16B13, a resolution approving a contract for professional services with the Downtown Development Authority for the operation and management of the municipal parking structure and parking lot 1.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Councilman Mondell, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Consent minute action. The council will now consider minute action items. These are routine business items that do not require a resolution. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Approving the request for a change in dispensing room for Casper Hospitality LLC doing business as Courtyard Marriott Resort License Number 4, 4260 Hospitality Lane. Appointing Jason Huber, Member-at-Large Representative, Steve Boyle, Utility Contractor Representative, and reappointing Mike Brownell, General Contractor Representative, to three-year terms on the Contractors Licensing and Appeals Board expiring December 31, 2018. Authorizing the reappointment of Tom Reader to the Leisure Services Advisory Board to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2018. Appoint, reappointing Michael Bell and John Lawson to the Casper Public Utilities Advisory Board to six-year terms ending December 31, 2021. Authorizing the purchase of one new 30,000-pound lift, vehicle lift from Napa Auto Parts to be used in the fleet division, maintenance division of the Support Services Department.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action items just read.
So moved.
Seconded. Councilman Mondell moved and seconded by Councilman Miller. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Now's the time, we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with council to please come forward. We ask that you state your name and address. Anyone wish to address council? Welcome, Ms. Bergeron.
Thank you kindly. Mayor, do I understand you're the new mayor?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm impressed. Mayor and council, Linda Bergeron, 2352 South Cosman Avenue. I missed the chance to speak on item 13, established date of public hearings. I imagine since it was that consent item, I could not have spoken to it. I was at the county commission meeting. So, basically for item A, am I to understand that you're just sitting a date for discussion of that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll, I'll still have a chance to speak to that, correct?
Yes, you will.
Okay. And then, um, because of the situation that's occurred, I would like to ask once again that we consider changing the time that the city council meets so that the public can attend both county commission and city council meetings, if that could be brought up somehow, and, uh...
I've, I've tested that idea on your behalf.
Thank you kindly.
And met with resistance from all fronts. So, I'll, I'll bring it up again, but I, I would not encourage you.
Okay. Well, maybe I'll try and rev up some enthusiasm from the public. Thank you kindly.
You would be welcome. Thank you. Anyone else want to address council?
There are four of us from Congress on Wyoming Boulevard that want to speak on our floor conference, or how would you like us to do?
Um, sure, as long as you're conscientious about not repeating what others have said, please approach the lectern. Before you get started, you did notice that we nixed it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
There's just, uh, do I need to state name and address in all of that?
Please.
Okay. Debbie Snell at 3961 East 20th Street.
Doug Gibson, 2041 South Walsh Drive.
Joel McGuire, 2091 South Walsh.
Rob Shook, 2090 South Walsh.
And we are here today, we just want to talk about our park that is in our neighborhood in hopes that perhaps coming together with the city, with a committee, with our neighbors and with the city, to be able to plan a usage for this park. Joe, did you want to talk?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, um, Debbie's a little bit nicer than I am, so I'll just start out as saying, I'm kind of the disappointed citizen, um, of the city. And to set the table a little bit, uh, 30 years ago, Royal and Associates approached this body, and they said, "We want to put in a subdivision," and they said, and the, the council said, "Okay, you can put in your subdivision, but you have to set aside 5% of that land and give it to us as a park." And so, the bargain was struck, and the city became the custodian of that five acres of land that's located at 21st and Wyoming Boulevard. Well, I don't know if you're going to call that a tax or just a bargain that was made for the benefit of those of us who live in the subdivision, extortion is, would be a way of saying, but whatever happened, the city became the custodian of that land, and we became the beneficiaries of it. We paid a higher price to live in that subdivision, because the people who were developing it took part of that land, part of their profit, put it aside, and gave it to the city. And we moved into a place where we thought there were going to be buffers and parks and things like that. Well, to be honest with you, for the last 30 years, the city's kind of been a poor custodian of that piece of property. I mean, nothing has been done to it. We who live there pick up the trash and stuff, kids come out there and dump their TVs and shoot fireworks and drive their four-wheelers and come out and go mud bogging and things like that. Right now, the city's dumping mountains of snow there, which, to be honest with you, is against the zoning of that piece of property. I mean, it's zoned as residential, and I don't think you're supposed to be running big pieces of equipment all night long, um, dumping snow and things like that. And I think that there is an obligation to maintain that piece of property and keep it nice. If I took my piece of property and I let kids go mud bogging and I dump trash there and stuff, I'd be in violation of the zoning that controls that particular subdivision. So, we're a little bit concerned about that. Now, about a month ago, when I saw in the paper that there was a proposed land swap, um, you know, it was kind of, there wasn't a whole lot of detail in it. Said 21st and Wyoming Boulevard, so I figured that was the five acres. Um, so I came down and started asking some questions, and, you know, there were people who were, you know, uncomfortable that I was there, and running back to talk to supervisors, and, "Well, okay, you can see the appraisal, but you can't copy it, and you can't have it," which kind of goes against our, you know, I don't want to say the most, um, uh, well, I won't, I won't make fun of, uh, our president, but, you know, there, there's been a change in the way things are supposed to be happening with the city. And one of those things is being open and talking about things. And I asked to put my name on the, uh, agenda to talk tonight and show up tonight, and, you know, the item's canceled and taken off. Well, I mean, they had my name, address, and email, somebody could have sent me a notice that said, "We've changed the agenda," and we've taken it off the agenda, but it still needs to be discussed, because I went in and looked at the title, and I didn't do a thorough title search, but I never saw where the developer actually signed title over to the city for that five acres. So I asked a few questions, and I was told, "Well, the developer was waiting for the city to turn it into a park. That never happened, and now the developer is gone, and so, and this is simply an opinion. I don't know, but I think that there's a problem with the title to that five acres." And the city spent a couple grand to have that piece of property appraised. I know there's a commercial appraisal on it, and I don't really know why the city's... I know there's a commercial appraisal on it, and I don't really know why the city's spending money appraising that piece of property when it's supposed to be a park. That was the bargain that this body entered into with the developer, was to turn it into a park, and now they're getting it appraised and setting themselves up to maybe trade it or sell it or whatever. And, I mean, there's possibly a question as to the title. I mean, that is questionable at best. So, I guess I'm here to say I would like to see this be put back on the agenda and give those of us who live there an idea of what the city's going to do with that piece of property. Now, I know we just had a discussion that, you know, economics are bad right now, but at least as a custodian of that piece of property, the city should fence it off, control access to it. I mean, the Casper Rotary Club went in and planted trees and tried to spruce it up, and, you know, there's, there's an obligation on your behalf to take care of that piece of property, and really, it should be a park. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. And if you're not going to turn it into a park... But I know that when I bought my piece of property, I paid a premium because that's supposed to be a nice subdivision with buffers and parks.
Right.
Thank you for your time.
As I stated before, Doug Gibson, and I'm mostly here in support of my neighbors, and also, just to reiterate the support, in the purpose of what that land was set aside for in the original subdivision agreement and the way the original subdivision plot was set up, my concern was just to follow through and make sure that whatever happened, that the original agreements were met and that what that land was set aside for, whether it's done now or in the future, that... Oh, excuse me, I'm drawing a blank, but that that land is developed in the way that it was meant for, a park, a playground, or something somewhere, and not developed into something that it wasn't set aside for. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Gibson, I'm, 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 oh, I'm sorry. I'm a West Side guy, so I don't get out to this part of the town very often. How close is the nearest park to your home with our park system now?
I would say a couple blocks down the road.
We do have Fun Valley that is about a block and a half down 21st Street. It is on the south side of 21st Street. 21st Street has changed drastically since now going to Wyoming Boulevard. The speed and volume is incredible on that street. I have stood at that crosswalk, even with the lights flashing, 10, 15 cars will go by, even with kids and dogs standing there. It would be nice if we could have something of a developed park on the north side of 21st Street so that kids don't have to cross that street. Liz Becker is in that neighborhood, too, and we talked about how if we had moved in and had that kind of traffic when our kids were young, there's no way we'd let them cross that street.
Thank you.
Councilman Hopper.
The city runs into this quite often. We have required in the past to have a certain amount of set aside for landscaping and park development and trails. And I note that there is, there is a 10-foot easement there that goes between two of the houses, I don't remember the address, that goes out to this property. But on the other hand, the city is also in a position where we have a lot of people that don't want to see any development at all behind them. And quite honestly, that's the majority of people. When somebody lives adjacent to some open ground, they typically don't want to see anything go on there at all. And I realize there's a curb cut on 21st Street there, but parks are expensive for the city to maintain, and we have to maintain them for a long time. This, you might call it a nature park.
And that's what it has been used for.
And that's what it has been, and we had people here talking about that, as a matter of fact.
It has, and we actually, in hopes of being able to form, like I said, maybe a committee with the city to discuss the uses of this, it would be nice to have a small area, perhaps, just a small playground area, picnic tables along with a fence area, but for the most part, we would like to have it left in its natural state. And we also understand the expenses right now, too, with the city, and would not want anything that's a high maintenance that would cost a lot of money.
Yeah, that's another issue, having it adjacent to the highway. It's a good buffer zone.
I was, my house at 21st and Walsh was the first house on the street, and that was what sold me on the subdivision, is I went down and looked at the plat, and it showed it was a proposed city park. And I'm the original owner, I've lived there since 1978, and now with the advent of this 21st Street going out into Outer Drive, which is commonly known in the neighborhood as the 21st Street Raceway, a major increase in traffic. I've seen some near misses. I almost have hit there twice. It's, it's just, it's totally out of control. And we need to have some direction there, but that's not the case. It's the park situation. All the landowners originally bought the homes, that was the plan to be a park, and I think it's, needs to stay that way. Get the title cleared up, and then go ahead, and when we have the money, then we can do something. But we could do a little like Joe said, fence it, that sort of thing, at least in perpetuity it'd work out that we'd be a park in the end.
Do we have any questions, council?
And you did mention a pathway that goes into that park. There is one that runs right along Joe's property off of Walsh, because it was intended to have easy access for people to be able to get into that area without having to go onto 21st or around through Parkway. So yes, there was a easement next to his house.
Any more questions or comments to the speakers? Thank you. Do we want to discuss this?
Mr. Mayor?
Go.
I think as far as discussion, I think this would probably be if we want to discuss that this should be moved to a work session rather than trying to discuss it here, because there are several issues that have come up, including the pipeline easement that runs under the property. So, I think staff is working on checking into some of those issues and potentially the title issue, and we need to make sure that those things are squared away and our homework is done before we start down the path for the discussion.
Councilman Pacheco.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, and I think the frustration, especially of the residents in that area, were heard, and I think they need to know they've been heard, so they just don't walk away with that. But the also side of it is that they understand, too, that this council, I think in many, many, probably in several years, is more open in understanding and listening than it ever has been. So, you have been heard, and I want to make sure you know that. The other, the other thing is, is that we, that we do, we should and we need to have a conversation about that property and to also understand and to be, take onus that the ball was dropped somehow, somewhere, and that we take that responsibility as well of that property. And we need to figure that out and come to terms with that, for the sake of the residents as well. And so, if I have anything to say about it, we will be talking about it and moving forward. Somebody mentioned to me that the government moves at a Snell's pace, and it does, and it's frustrating sometimes, because now we move and we'll talk about it in committee, and that'll take a while, and we do this, and it does move slowly. It's, the old adage, it's like making sausage. It's terrible when it goes through, watching it be made, but it, but it tastes good when you eat it. So, you know, it, we, we heard, I heard you, and I want to make sure that you know that we will be discussing this, and it's not going to be dropped.
Councilman Schlager.
Just real quick, I think the only other message that, that I think we all heard is there's a traffic problem over there that we should add to that conversation when we
Well, I am going to footnote this discussion, and yes, we do need to talk about what we want to do with that property. Pipeline easement is a complication. Also, I hear, I hear the property owners frustrations here, and I also know that developers form an LLC, limited liability company, for developments so that they can kind of duck out of the long-term obligations. Sorry to say, but that's just how it works, and it's, it's legal. It's legal. So, covenants and plans that may have been formed when this property was first plotted may not apply anymore, and not because of any sinister conspiracy, but just because that's how business works. One more thing to add is, snow removal in the city is getting more expensive because we have fewer and fewer places to put those mountains of glaciated snow that we take off the streets. We could be financially shooting ourselves in the foot by taking away one of the few properties that we still can load with snow that we take off the streets. And yes, we can have no snow removal, we can have that discussion, but as it stands, it's very helpful for us to be able to put those mountains of snow somewhere. And fuel costs are actually increasing because we lost one of our pivotal snow deposit areas. So, a lot of moving parts, and we will entertain that discussion. Who else would like to address council?
Good evening, Mayor Sandoval, council members. I'm Kathy Ide, and I reside at 3838 Garden Creek Road, Casper 82601. My concern today is in regard to the potential land trade that the city is considering in exchange for mountain real estate owned by Michael C. Reed. Despite the fact that the city has decided to forego a trade of that parcel located at 21st Street and Wyoming Boulevard in exchange for Michael Reed's property, the issue that remains in question is the council's authority to exchange land which belongs to the taxpayers of Casper. It is noted in your packet tonight that the city is still looking at other city properties that are available for this trade. Throughout our nation, some courts have held that public lands are not to be sold or leased in whole or in part, except to the highest bidder at a public auction. Unfortunately, swapping taxpayer-owned land through the years seems to have become a go-to move for our local city government. If the city of Casper has property it will be divesting itself of, then the proper avenue would be to place the subject parcel up for public auction. Without the benefit of an option, there is no protection against favoritism. When these deals are put together behind closed doors, this allows the potential for collusive deals and cronyism. Many of the folks who benefit from these swaps are those who know how to game the system where the rules are hard to identify. In addition, by denying the free market what it does best, the potential of overvaluation of property for purchase and undervaluation of property for sale or trade makes itself highly likely. This council has a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Casper to be good stewards of our city-owned resources. This council has an ethical duty to allow its citizens, entrepreneurs, business owners to compete fairly when our city government divests itself of city assets. This can only be done by a true free-market public auction. Tonight, I would like to request that any properties which the taxpayers of Casper own via the city of Casper be put up for public auction so that no private deals favoring select private parties will occur. Now, originally, I wanted to, I was going to end my little spiel at that, at this point, but I got to tell you tonight, I am totally baffled. We've had two perfect examples of what these type of deals, the problems that occur. We have the deal where we're paying over $200,000 for property located at David. We're paying $200,000 over the appraised value? That's a lot of money, and I think that that is actually disrespectful to the taxpayers of Casper. And another example, which both Councilman Kathy and Councilman Powell stated regarding the liquor license issue. You both stated how important it is for the free market to, to do what it does best, and it distorts things. It distorts the valuations of those liquor licenses and the availability and how they're used. And so I just can't understand truly why you, you know, you say that how important the free market is in particular instances and yet deny it in other areas. And so, again, I would like to just really request that any properties that the city has that is going to be selling, that they would be put up for a true free-market public auction. Thank you.
Any questions for the side? Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Sweeney.
Good evening, Mayor. That, that was kind of a surprise. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor Powell, for your service, and it's been an interesting year, to say the least. Not boring, though, I don't think. I, I just had a couple of questions. First off, that on, on the issue of the land trade, I was under the opinion, sitting in the audience, that you did go ahead and take action and went ahead and approved the land swap and simply canceled the public meeting. Obviously, that's not what transpired, okay? So the public hearing canceled the issue?
That parcel of land is off the board for consideration of trade.
Okay. Okay. So, that particular parcel won't be considered again as far as a trade, and, but will there be an opportunity for, for these folks in the area to have a voice with council, either through a public hearing on what to do up there? Because at work sessions, you can't speak unless you're spoken to or asked a question.
Right. And Vice Mayor Kathy promised that we were going to deal with this and discuss this parcel of lands, and we will.
Okay. All right. The second item was...
And during that, if it's in a work session, stakeholders can be invited and would be.
Okay. So, on the plants furniture parcel, I certainly agree with the pros and cons. Obviously, I would have loved to have seen that come to a public hearing also, so that the public could have basically talked about, you know, is this the right time? You know, are we putting too much money into this? But being, you have agreed to purchase at, at above appraisal, and it is a great, great piece of downtown, and, and I... of downtown and I thank my neighbor for moving forward with this. But I'm going to throw you a real doozy here because I'm still not over the conference center. And I truly believe with the advent of the Fine Arts Performance Center, I don't believe it's going to happen at three crowns. I just, I don't. There's too many hurdles. And if we have a need for a conference center, let's not worry about the hotel component. Let's maybe look at that again, at putting that downtown in this portion, which if you remember, there was the hotel component, there was the conference center component, but there also was part of that was the plaza. Nowhere near the size that we're currently talking about moving forward with, but it definitely would be something to consider on putting the conference center downtown and then going out for bid, trying to find somebody to probably manage it. But just as thought. The opportunity fund, I totally agree with, but I disagree. I really am concerned about our infrastructure and concerned about the sewer and I think we're going to get bit. And I hope I am totally wrong, but nine million bucks is not a lot of money when it comes to that sewer plant and trying to fix some of the problems. So I'm glad I misunderstood what happened with the land swap and hopefully the citizens will be given the opportunity to come and address council at a work session and be able to work together to fix some problems up there. And last point is Eclipse. I've been out of town for a couple of weeks visiting family in Pennsylvania and I've heard differing things. I talked to Bob Price this morning. I believe the city still needs to move forward with somebody to help coordinate. We haven't had a meeting since I believe May or June was the last meeting of the overall group. And I think it's going to take somebody to coordinate that. My understanding, I haven't seen Town Square Media's proposal, but I think something's got to give here on the Eclipse. And how many people are going to come? Who knows? But we still need a decent showing. And my understanding is Town Square's proposal was kind of an à la carte, some picking and choosing and revenue sharing, substantial profits, 75% going back to the city. I didn't, again, I didn't, I haven't read it or seen it, but just talking to Bob briefly. So I still would like you to consider something there because I don't, Chief King has a day job and there's a lot broader responsibility here and to thrust that on any of the department heads, I think is too much. So anyway, I would encourage you to still consider to move forward on that. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Any questions or comments directed to Mr. Sweeney? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mondo.
Welcome, Mr. Lamont.
Tracy Lamont, 721 East 12th Street. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Steve, I see musical chairs up there and I, you switch sides here on me, I'm confused. A couple of quick questions. I lived at 3581 East 19th and bought a new house from Joe Mock in 1976 and that's, is the area that's in question here. I remember looking at the plot. My ex-wife sold a lot of those homes up there at the time and I spent time up the construction office up the street and I'm still in contact with Don Mock, Joe's son, and I don't know if Joe's still alive or not, but I can get the details for you, I'm sure. There was some confusion. Nottingham was to go all the way through to Country Club Road. That was initially planned that way. There was a park on the drying board, but it got moved down into the bowl where the kids sled. That's on 21st and Nottingham, not far from Rob Schuck's house. And I can tell you why Rob Schuck is iron and I don't blame him. That is, that's freeway through there now. There's nothing showing anybody down from McKinley all the way to Outer Drive. His house is probably the closest and there's a bunch of them around the loop that they brought right up against this property. And if you jump in that snow up there, I haven't been by there, but, and I understand your concerns of where you got to put it. And I know you've been developing other areas because you've lost some areas due to housing developments and so forth, but the good news is you aren't dealing with a chemical that's going to create problems with the environment like it used to in the old days, I'm hoping. Anyhow, those folks right below that, so hopefully they're not getting run off from all that. But any lights and any commercial development in that area in the future, there'll be like a light over an intersection on the interstate. So I would discourage that, but there's plots somewhere on file over here in the engineer's office that you'll find with some changes that were made, I'm sure. I'd encourage you to dig those out and not encourage the rest of us. I'm going to specifically direct this to Mr. McDonald. I was a little set back after watching the video, these fine folks, Debbie Snell's mother was my mother's housemaid for years and a caregiver. I didn't even know she was here, but I watched it on the news. So they really come and call that to your attention. I raised red flag on a gas easement issue. They were just working on that gas line when Mickey McMurray, most good friend of the late Mickey McMurray was making some changes in there. So, but I'm telling, and I posted this on several Facebook sites I'm involved in, Casper Journal, News Story, and Casper Star Tribune, so why don't we get off on the right start this year? TV, you're mowing the job. Just tell it like it is. You guys have a job of building public trust. And it was whiny, had been. And I'm glad to see a new structure here and I'm not lecturing to you, I'm just telling you what I see from the memory of the public. I was forced to step to Casper Mountain Landowners Association site over the land swap. I shared a little bit of that with you. I'm not losing numbers on that. I'm gaining them like wildfire. The question is on the 200 acres you turned over to the county to manage. It looks to me like that's all tied up by the biathlon club from what I'm reading. One of us late tonight, I always go to the county commission meeting. They're tired of seeing me in there, but I'm not going to quit coming, nor am I going to be here, quit coming here. I'm going to ask questions. I appreciate giving me the time. My family goes back a long ways, 1889 to be specific. And I know affairs. I kind of laugh at Bob over here and he's watching his first reaction. He and I got snickered into planning and working a mine show at the event center behind the oil show. The event center was built, the coal show was on the road, but no one showed up. So he's talking about the Eclipse Festival. I really commend Kenny King for stepping up and sending you guys a letter and saying, let's scale back. And, you know, I think 10,000 numbers, a good number comes to my mind. I think 2,000 is probably a little low. I hope like heck there's that many people come in. I've also been calling many nights. My office used to be in Gillette and I'd step there all week. The campsite up there, you guys need to go up and tour that facility. The guy who ran the operations that lives right here in town now is Mary Dan's Wickel. I know you all know Man's Wickel. That's Jimmy Williams. He's your neighbor. Lives down on Quinley 11th and Lincoln. But they went in and put in the infrastructure for massive campgrounds up there, RV hookups. And they want to use them. And they get the BMW motorcycle events in there, they get the national fireworks displays in there, they get the national high school finals, Douglas gets that once in a while. And that's all good money spent. Plus they've used it for temporary housing when there's some big projects that come along. And, you know, once the infrastructure's in, they put the hookups down and irrigation boxes so he can drive a轮 and doesn't interfere with anything else at all. That's good use of money rather than paying some promoter out of Colorado, come up here to put all his goons in church that say stat, or rent stat. We got people in town, on the Casper Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, the Emergency Services Planner, they're more than capable of putting that together. I think we need to look at limitations going on Casper Mountain. Yeah, because, you know, we have to shut it down during the fire season, but that's going to be right in the height of fire season. And there's only so much campground facility up there. And, you know, we need to be sensitive to the property owners all throughout the county when that goes on. So I got that on the table about getting off on the right foot this year. My last question, and I'm sorry that Jermaine left already, I had two things. And I was sure never ever exposed, Mayor Powell, ex-Mayor Powell, the press released the super on the bike thing. But men, the eyes hadn't been dotted and the t's hadn't been crossed by the staff that should be looking at the details. That's real embarrassing and I feel for the Reed family, but I'd like to know before I come back the next time, is there indeed, you know, easements for the entire Brea Trail? When I saw you in the Parks Department, I believe I saw a map somewhere and I think it's probably disappeared. But with the trail, it's going to increase the use of that trail substantially. It could tie into a wonderful program and hold it on for year-on-use, but the degradation of that trail there isn't there right now. And the degradation on your city property and the mountain bicycle use is atrocious. There needs to be National Forest Service standards put in to control erosion. I mean, we've spent millions of taxpayers' money trying to acquire this. Granted, we got free property out of the trade, but we better take care of it. I think I made the statement the last time I was here, the user are 11 at the depth, but they're not loving the belly up to maintain it. I mentioned to Mayor Sandoval last, after the last meeting, the bicyclers need to pony up and pay $35 a year for registration for use, just like the snowmobilers do. They're getting a free ride all over the state. The DOT has taken and just carried them to them and they're not paying a penny. You know, this is the snowmobile, the motorized side, they're paying gas tax, which you guys are benefiting from that. I'm not anti bicycle use, but they need to be responsible. They need to pay their half. So there's a lot of things going on in that city-owned property up there that have turned over to the county that have managed it. They're not pretty. And I'll be emailing you guys when I have time, some pictures of some major dedications that's taken place with D11-sized cats, but with no reclamation, none whatsoever, all over your 200 acres. And it's going to worsen. And I was here at a nice public meeting, I spoke in favor of that over there, but what I've seen unfold is atrocious. The Army Corps of Engineers wasn't even notified of that major disturbance and it's a wetland, mind you, where that biathlon is. And it's the dry streams. I don't know if you guys have been tracking what the controversy over the Clean Water Act, the 404 Act, I would suspect you do because you're involved in it so close and you're cleaning up the river out here. By the way, I know for a while what a fine, witty debris chip is, a film material, that's a wood chip. The wood chip's caught on fire at the dump, Robin. So, you know, be fair with those people out there. They were totally burned out, don't deceive them. You know, to me, that whole thing is a cradle of grief issue with the fire, but enough from the soapbox. I'll be back to see you. I appreciate you letting me run over. Happy New Year to all of you. Congratulations once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments directed for Tracy Lamont. Anyone else would like to address council? Welcome, Mr. Giles.
Woody Giles, 290 East Magnolia. I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but because of discussions that have come up, I thought FYI. With the five-acre parcel at 21st and Outer Drive, it kind of got my attention. The appraisal, what got my attention at 1.6 million for five acres and, you know, I don't know, but I find it odd that across the street is 42 acres that is praised at $38,000. I just, it doesn't make sense to me. And I've been coming here for three years, more or less, giving you various numbers of these anomalies that should raise somebody's eyebrows. And I have some more numbers I haven't given you yet, but I, you know, but that are even worse. But, you know, the county commissioners set the mill levies, I understand, and what they do is they have this much property to, so that that sets the mill levy to get the amount of money that they need. With a lot of property, you can lower the mill levy and still get the same amount of money to run facilities and whatnot. So when some groups pay pennies, that means that everybody else has to pay 110% or 115% to make up for the shortfall of the 2% or 3% that pay nothing or very little. And so that, to me, is an injustice and so, and I've talked to various individuals on the council and they say that there's nothing we can do and, you know, gee whiz and can't do anything. And I've given it an awful lot of thought and I came up with two things you can do. And one of, and it's within your budget. And the first thing is cease with the pledge of allegiance or if that doesn't work with you, at least delete the last sentence with the liberty and justice part because I pointed out a lot of injustice and it hasn't seemed to bother anybody, so this will give you out. So that's all I had to say.
So your two things were cease with the pledge or just at least mix the last...
Yeah, quit saying liberty and justice for all because that's obviously not true. It makes you all hypocrites. So here's an out.
Your Honor.
Any comment?
Councilman Jones.
I don't see how we're the hypocrites when we don't decide what the value of the land is. That's not on us.
I didn't say you do set the value. I'm saying that I pointed out obvious problems.
And we've discussed those with you.
Pardon?
And we've discussed them with you.
No, you haven't. All you said is, nothing I can do.
Nothing we can do.
You can make a phone call. You could acknowledge that there is something wrong and you'd never challenge my numbers, you know? I'll give you another number. You all know where the Granite Peak Office Building is, sort of south of the Foss Motors on Second Street, two stories. It's, according to the assessor, it sits on 23 acres. The land, based on what the land in the other neighborhood, you know, is at least $100,000 an acre. That makes it 2.3 million just for the dirt. It's a two-story building. It's, I believe, I've never been inside, but I think it's a very nice building. And according to the assessor, it paid $133 in property taxes last year. And according to the assessor, it paid $133 in property taxes last year. My place is not worth 5 million, and I paid damn more than $133. Isn't that an anomaly? Shouldn't that raise somebody's eyebrow, like, what? Check it out, prove me wrong. If I'm wrong, okay, I'm wrong. If I'm not, you should be mad, these people should be mad. They all pay more than $133, and they don't have $5 million worth of property. So, so either, four times now I've heard it said that we'll discuss it in work session, never happened. So I understand it's not, you don't want to deal with it, so, okay, that's fine, but get rid of the liberty and justice thing, because that's wrong. You don't care about justice. I pointed out injustice time and time again, nobody cares. So, there you go. The ball is in your court.
Any more questions or comments to address to Mr. Giles?
The one comment I would like to make is that if you are that adamant about the assessments of the properties, then maybe you ought to go out and find a person to run for county assessor, and elect a new county assessor, and get the citizens to vote that assessor in. Now, if you want to do something, there is a path forward to get something accomplished, because the assessor is an elected position.
That's true. And is required by the state constitution to uphold the constitution, and you all took an oath for the same thing, and I pointed out where that's not being done, and nobody cares.
I would say it's the apathy of the voters.
I don't see the council do anything either, so-
We all voted for the assessor. The only way you're going to change that assessor, this council cannot change that county assessor. The voters of the population have to change the assessor, which would then have to change the process.
Well, can I ask you, you, do you find anything odd with the numbers I've been giving the council for the last few years?
You will get no argument on the numbers. Where you're getting the argument is, who has the power to change anything? And that power is in the people, and the people have to decide that they want to do that.
If this governing body here was to say, you know, I think there's a problem, I think somebody should look into it, because I'm just a nobody, but you are the leaders of the second-largest city in Wyoming, you guys have some pull. I would think that would carry a little weight.
We have no pull with that position.
I'm not saying you have to change the position. All you have to do is mention that there is a problem, and you refuse to do even that.
I think the assessor is well aware that there is a problem.
Yeah, I agree with you, but-
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Don't make me hit the gab.
I just pulled, I just pulled up the taxes on Wyoming Investments LLC, which is the office building at 1300 Venture Way, which is Granite Peak, and they paid $12,375.99 in property tax, not 133.
Well, I looked at it, and from the-
You may have looked at something else, and because-
I looked at that particular property, and it's-
This is, right here?
Yeah, it's all online, I agree, I looked at the same thing. When I looked at it a couple weeks ago, it was $133. And since I've been coming here giving you the numbers about the east side, a lot of those properties now are zero, 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 and they weren't, you know, a month ago, when I started mentioning, and now they sort of like went off the map. I don't know if that's just happenstance, and I don't know, but, but I've been doing this for three years, and still not a single, you know, acknowledgement that there's a
I acknowledge there's a problem, Your Honor.
Any more questions or comments for Mr. Giles? All right. Well, shall we go around the table, starting with Councilman Schlogger?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Councilman Miller.
I'm just starting a new year, getting things wrapped in, but I did attend a CADA fiber meeting today, and I think that board is trying to push forward on making some agreements with certain things. I know there's been some talks about our providers there, so we're actually putting together some efforts on the making a push for this year, and hopefully I'll be learning more here in the future. And on Thursday, I'll be attending a meeting with a few of our legislators regarding some of the Wyoming Association of Municipalities concerns and legislative funding for the budgeting for municipalities.
Thank you. Councilman Hopkins.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make it clear that I remain very interested in securing the property that will provide our citizens access to the bridle trail in perpetuity, as I believe that is in the best interests of our current citizens and people who live here in the future, open to ideas that staff will propose to us as to how we can accomplish that.
Councilman Pacheco.
Just a couple things, I don't have anything to report, per se, other than a quick reflection of our past year of being on city council, and that it came fairly quickly, and I've learned a lot. One, that I have stopped judging so quickly, and learning to take time to listen and being able to do that. I think one of the key components of what I'm trying to do more in my life is to listen more, and I think we tend to talk a lot. And if we can stop to listen to people's concerns and thoughts, and be open to a concept of radical centrism, of where we can know that there's nothing ashamed with believing in compromise and working together. And I think that's where this council has gone and worked together, and I also think that's where this nation probably needs to go to be successful someday, that we did that. And that's what I've learned this last year. I thought I knew a lot before I came on council, and I knew nothing. But I've grown in that, and I've come to a great appreciation of each member on this council, and their gifts and their talents, and it's been, it's been a great pleasure. And to quickly, I think people do care, Woody, and I think when you get into politics and you get into government, you come in with a pretty wide-eyed vision that you can change everything, and then you become aware that the process is like sludge, and you want to try to make difference, and you know that there are bad things happening, and you know that there are things that are difficult, but it's difficult. And so people do care, we do listen, the process is ugly sometimes, but if we just listen, and if we work together, we can do some pretty amazing things. And so there are people that do care, Woody, so.
Councilman Mundell.
Just a few things. First of all, our thoughts in person should go out to the family of Mike Edo. Mike was one of the persons who I think has had a vision and a major investment in our downtown area, and his untimely death at the age of 63 just lets us know again how precious life really is, and that we should grab at everything we can to enjoy what we have been given. I wanted to pass on to you, Councilman Pacheco, government is like the mating of elephants. There's a lot of noise, and it takes two years to see any results. That was the first thing I ever learned when I was in a quasi-governmental group back in 1978. Nine excellent candidates that we had presented to us tonight for my position, you have a real tough choice ahead of you, but you have got really good selection. It's going to be a hard selection, I'm glad I'm not in your seat. It has been bugging me for the past year the way we say the pledge of allegiance. Jake Daley, the former superintendent of the Trona County Public Schools, always has said, "One nation under God, not one nation under God." There is no comma. And that when you stand, it's with your heart, your hand over your heart. So I was hoping that over the year, my saying, "One nation under God," then "under God" comes after me, that somebody would pick up, but just, the way to properly say that, way to properly say the pledge, I'm just passing it on my parting words. And finally, thank you, you have all been my extended family, I appreciate your tolerance, I appreciate your patience with me. It has been a real pleasure to work with you and to serve the city. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
I just wanted to thank Charlie for his service as mayor, I think he did a fantastic job. He's very transparent, included all of council, and I know that Mr. Sandoval and Mr. Kathy will continue that. So thank you, Charlie. Congratulations to you too. Looking forward to it. And goodbye to Robin, who'll be missed. Robin and I campaigned together, on this whole ride together all the way up here, so it's, I'm sad to see her go, but I think we have a list of good candidates that could possibly replace her, so we're looking forward to that. Other than that, that's all I have, no meetings in the last couple of weeks, though I got a couple coming up here. That's it.
Vice Mayor Kathy.
Well, through the holidays, it's been a slow time for meetings. Robin will be missed. I appreciate the support of the rest of council for selecting me for this position. And thank you, Charlie, it's been a good year. And it's been a fun year, so we thank you for that.
Well, I did have a meeting today, I met with the Joint Powers Board, and it was for the Detention Center and for the Hall of Justice. And that Joint Powers Board is two council members, two county commissioners, and a citizen. So we're accepting applications for citizen. The damage that we did today during our meeting was, we spent $40,000 on some infrastructure concerns at the Hall of Justice. It's all fun and games till the fire chief shuts down the Hall of Justice. So we're gonna, and the county-city split for the Hall of Justice is 50-50, so it's essentially gonna be a $20,000 hit to the city's coffers. The Detention Center, by the way, is up and running and working great, and they had no requests, no concerns. That's a county 60, city 40 split, and on this Joint Powers Board, we could use another council member on there. I thought of you, Councilman Johnson.
I'll do it.
Okay. And it means quarter me, and sometimes not even that. All right. On a personal note, I would like to thank all members of this council for your vote of confidence. I genuinely meant it when I said that there wasn't any expected change, because Charlie Powell set a really good example of transparency, including the council and decisions. I am very encouraged by city staff. I think that under the direction of City Manager McDonald's, we are going to establish some protocols, get some ducks in a row, and have a very bright future. And I would like to mention to Tracy Lamont, although he didn't actually call out, City Manager McDonald's, it is protocol to address the mayor, and that I would appreciate it if we didn't get into addressing the city attorney or the city manager directly, just for protocol. And one last personal thing, I have been under a misapprehension that this office and being on this council is not about personality, it's not about individuals. And because of that, I have always refrained and have not, in, refrained from acknowledging my greatest support system, which is my wife, Jude. I don't publicly acknowledge her, but she supports me every day in this. In fact, she made a point to tell me tonight, she said, "When you're addressing Councilman Mundell and Councilman Schlogger, don't make it sexist, just say 'councilman.'"
That's right.
Yeah. So that support is so invaluable, and because of that misapprehension, I didn't acknowledge her during the election, and swearing in an oath, and I didn't even acknowledge my son, he was in the gallery zoo. So maybe I could loosen up on that idea a little bit. And the next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, January 12, 2016, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, January 19, in the council chambers.
Chair Wood, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go moved.
Moved by Councilman Mundell and seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote.
My last one?
Please record the votes.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you.